It's time to begin the March session of the Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'll call it to order. We do have a quorum. At this time, I'd like to ask you if you would in reverence to the flag and our invocation, if you'd please stand. We'll ask Commissioner Bob Barnwell to lead us in our pledge to the flag. Commissioner Ricky Jones, if he would, to lead us in our invocation this evening. Commissioner Barnwell, if you'll do the flag, then we'll have a prayer.
Please, Father. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States, Saint Mary America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings that you have given us and the blessings of living in this great land that we call the United States. We ask that you be with us as county commissioners tonight, that we may represent the people of Williamson County in their best interest. May we take our votes and our discussion seriously. And we ask that you be with each of us tonight in this deliberations. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please. Ms. Anderson, we'll take the role. If you're present, push your white button so that we can have a record of attendance this evening.
I have 23 present, one absent. Commissioner Jeff Ford, absent.
Commissioner Ford called me from Dallas today. He was called away in his work, so certainly will not be able to be here tonight. Sends his greetings, but we'll operate with 23 present tonight. Each of you received the approval of the minutes of the February 8, 2010 County Commission meeting. These were mailed to each member. County Commission will entertain a motion to adopt. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Barnwell, second by Commissioner Langston. Do we adopt? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show unanimous adoption of the minutes. Introduction and acceptance of the Highway Commission minutes. These were sent to you by mail last week after the Highway Commission met. I'll entertain a motion.
No motion.
Commissioner Bain, the motion. Commissioner Davis is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Thank you very much. Citizens Communications. We have any? No, no one signed up for the Citizens Communication portion of the agenda this evening. We'll move on to Communications and Messages. I would like to remind you that this is a meeting of the legislative body of Williamson County. We would ask your cooperation. If you have a cellphone, make sure it's on silence. If you have a pager, make sure it's on silence. If it does go off near the meeting, we'll wish you well outside. So encourage you to help us with that, to not interrupt our meeting, please. Commissioner Lynch, you have a comment, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Mr. Coleman and Ms. Anderson in this County Commission. We were number one in the state in fiscal responsibility.
That's pretty good. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Any other comments before we move on to have a proclamation to present tonight? Mayor Anderson, if you'd come to the podium, as well as Commissioner Cheryl Wilson, and make your proclamation honoring the 40th anniversary of O'More College of Design.
Mr. Chairman, as Cheryl is making her way up here, Commissioner Wilson, let me say thanks to Clyde for acknowledging that with David, but it's not possible to have the kind of results we've been having over the last couple of years without our other elected officials and our dedicated employees, because they have had to make some sacrifices along the way. So I want to acknowledge that too, because it's a team effort to do the things we've done here for the last couple of years. Cheryl, I'm gonna let you do this, since you're on the board there, and it'll have a lot more meaning.
You come up and be behind me, that would be great. That would be great. I just wanted to say, before we read this proclamation, I have been honored to be on this board for a little over seven years. And when this first started and someone called and asked me, did I want to be on a O'More College of Design Board of Directors, the first thing I said was, why me? I have no artistic talent. But, you know, as the years have gone on, I have grown to seek this as a passion of mine. It is a wonderful school, and this is so deserving that we honor Mrs. O'More for this like, for this achievement of her 40th anniversary. So I'm gonna read that proclamation for you now. Thank you. Mrs. Eloisa Moore was a pioneer in interior design, breaking the barrier of generation of gender equality, to become a professional-trained interior designer and teaching design courses to military wives while traveling with her husband, Colonel Rory O'More, through the 1940s. Whereas, in 1960s, Mrs. O'More moved to Franklin and produced a number of notable murals around Middle Tennessee, and became one of the early leaders of historic preservation movement in Williamson County. Whereas, in 1970, Mrs. Eloisa Moore, Pitts O'More, realized her lifelong dream of establishing an American school with the unique creative ambiance of a French-designed school. And whereas Williamson County is honored and proud to be chosen by Mrs. O'More to be the home of a O'More College of Design, originally located in the late Eloise Pitts O'Mores Victorian home, which was subsequently relocated to its present seven acres located in downtown historic Franklin. Whereas currently, the college enrolls approximately 200 students, offers accredited Bachelors of Fine Arts degree in fashion design, interior design, and visual communications. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Anderson, as the mayor of Williamson County, do hereby encourage all citizens to join me as we celebrate the vision of Mrs. O'More and the successful impact of the college in the professional design industry in Tennessee and around the world. And where be it further, and be it furthermore resolved, that I encourage all citizens to join the staff, students, and Board of O'More College on the occasion of their 40th anniversary and offer our support to their continued success for generations to come. And if you happened to look last night on the, I mean, on the Academy Awards, one day you may see a designer that may be a part of that in some way, may have designed a home, or may have designed an outfit, or may have been in visual communications. So I just wanted to congratulate them.
Dr. Hearsay, would you like to make any comments?
I'll just say, we do consider it an honor to be here tonight, and we thank you for presenting this proclamation. We also consider it an honor to live in Williamson County and to work in Williamson County, and I believe all four behind me do. I have my provost with me, my admissions director, the registrar, and the academic dean, and we have nine years to 15 years each at O'More, so an accumulation of maybe 40-something years, maybe 40 years. We're gonna have to add that, as if it's 40 years. But please come and visit us. We have a tea room on campus, and I'll say for any of you that are in front of me here, I will treat you to your first tea at O'More Tea Room at any time you just let me know you're coming. Thank you for having us tonight. We appreciate it a whole lot.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, while we're still on the Communications and Messages, we have some housekeeping to take care of. We have five late-filed resolutions this evening, so if you would, let's go through those. Resolution 31019, this is a late-filed resolution from Animal Control as it relates to accepting and allocating some donation money. Any objection from anyone hearing 31019? I see no objections, so we'll add 31019 to our resolutions. At the next resolution under appropriations, 710, excuse me, 31020, late-filed resolution. 21 and 22 are for the refinancing or refunding of the bonds. So is any objection to adding 31020, 21 and 22, all associated with the refinancing of bonds? Any objection at all? I see no objection. We'll add 31020, 31021 and 22. And then finally, 31023 is an agreement that the mayor has asked us to sign as it relates to the TMA agreement lease on the old Highway Department garage. We have action for that will be added as the last item under other, under your agenda this evening. So after 31018, we'll add late-filed resolution 31023. Is any objection? See none? So we'll add that there. So appreciate your indulgence there as we move through the agenda. We want to recognize tonight in our audience, a group of individuals with Troop 444, from the Bethlehem United Methodist Church. These young men, all of you stand up, would you? These young men are working on their communications badge, as a part of what they're doing, and accompanying them tonight is Russell Weatherford and Mr. Jim Williamson. Gentlemen, thank you for coming, and always a pleasure to have you here. You're welcome to come back at any time to see your county government operating as we do. So thank you for being here, and appreciate you coming. Each of you have been handed Resolution 3109. This did not get in the packet, so it's been given to you at your desk this evening, so certainly put that in its appropriate place as we go through the resolutions. And Tony Fortner, I just want to recognize and tell you on behalf of several County Commissioners, I know Debbie has worked hard to put this new communications together, and on behalf of all 24 of us, could you thank her for doing that? It's well done, informative, and keep up the good work. Thank you, sir. Very good. Mayor Anderson, we'll move on now to reports of county offices. Mayor Rogers, Anderson.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could have David to give us a report on the financial conditions of the county and some other points of interest, and also after he finishes, I'll have Matt Largen, our Director of Economic Development, give us kind of an overview of what's occurred in the last several years and where we are today.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have our three monthly reports that we normally give you, and because this meeting is so early in the month, the privilege tax final report is not available, but we do have the preliminary numbers from Mr. Horn's office, and we're happy to say that comparing February to February, February of '09, our total privilege tax was 201,384, and this February is 336,300. So as we've said over the last several months, any little bit of good news we can give you, we're gonna try to give you that. So that's one month, but we're glad to see it. Placed at your desk tonight was the monthly report for January of all the county funds, and everything appears to be in order there. When we get our February report, we'll have a little bit better idea on our collection of property taxes. I did call the trustee's office today, and his staff was able to give me some numbers, that our collections through the end of February are almost exactly percentage-wise where we were last year, so that's good news. Approximately 84% of the outstanding taxes were collected through the end of February. They did indicate, as we've been made aware of for several months, that we do have several bankruptcies and we'll have some delinquencies we'll have to work on, but we have an attorney in Bill Yost that, we call him Little Bulldog, he goes after them, and does a great job. So we'll be working on that. We do have your Cool Springs Conference Center report for the month of January, and that's down $46,444. Mr. Chairman, if there's any questions on those, we do have some resolutions that we'll be happy to address later on the meeting.
Any questions of Mr. Coleman while he's up? See none? Thank you, David. Excuse me, excuse me. Commissioner Chalfont?
No questions. However, just as a point, with the rather dismal turnout as far as the Conference Center was concerned, I think we really need to do as much as possible to try to encourage the use of that property. I've attended many, many different functions throughout the year, not at that location, and would certainly like to at least go on record of really supporting the Conference Center to the extent that we are able.
Thank you, sir. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, in your folder that was mailed out to you, many of you have a brochure that we are using. It's called Williamson 101. It's a brochure that we hand out to prospective, prospective individuals looking at our county. That and the department for the last year-plus has been headed up by Matt Largen. Matt is aggressively working, not only in the community, working with new businesses, trying to get them to locate here, and he has got two or three that we all have to sign letters of confidentiality, but he has been dealing with two or three of them, we hope in the next few months will break some very positive news in our county. He's likewise working on a lot of businesses inside our current businesses, trying to keep those jobs here. As we all know, that's so very, very important. Tonight, I'd ask Matt if he would give us an overview of a snapshot at about 40,000 feet, looking down, of what has been accomplished over the last several years under your tenure, so that you'd have that opportunity to put that out in a form of any kind of literature, and if you need more additional information, I'm sure Matt would be glad to share that with you, and at the same time, be able to go out a website and pull that up. Very informative meeting. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Matt Largen to come up.
Welcome, Matt.
Thanks so much, Chairman Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to spend a few minutes with you, talking about the economy of Williamson County, and thanks for all the support that you provide, economic development in the county. I thought I'd go ahead and talk about what we're seeing now, and then move towards the end and talk about what we've seen over the past eight years, and with some very positive news. First, I'd say the best way to describe what we're seeing now in the economy is activity level is high, believe it or not, but confidence is still very low. Our office is working 36 relocation, expansion, and retention projects. Companies looking to do one of those three things, with 16 of those what I would call active. Of those 36 projects, if they all announced tomorrow, it would result in about 7,600 jobs, about 2.7 million square feet of new space, and about $400 million in capital investment. So again, activity level is high, it's just confidence is still low in the market, preventing these companies from making decisions. I'd say probably the biggest reason for optimism long-term for this county is the fact that we're primarily a service sector economy. The two biggest growth sectors project in the next 10 years in terms of employment, healthcare, and management. Those are very strong sectors for our economy. I also want to mention a couple of recent rankings. Third-party validation, always great for the county. Forbes recently named us the fourth-best place to get ahead in the country, up six places from 2009. We were also ranked the healthiest county in Tennessee by the National County Health Ranking, the first annual ranking. And most impressively, I think, is that we were ranked the number-one county in Tennessee for personal and family, economic, and well-being, and the only county in the state to score a perfect 10. Two other things I'll mention before I go into sort of the eight-year time period, is that we're seeing a lot of activity on our website. January and February were two of the top four months in terms of activity, which to me foreshadows future investment. And in fact, more documents were downloaded in January than any month we've been tracking since we've had this website for the past year and a half. Next, 11,034 new business licenses were filed last year in the county. Pretty impressive. And in the next few weeks, you're gonna see a new website called WilliamsonInnovates.com, which is specific to small business entrepreneurs. It's all about the how and why to start your business in Williamson County. And I'll finally end with some really good news, to talk about what's happened in the last eight years. We've had a tough couple of years. Everybody's had a tough couple of years, but I want you all to know that in the last eight years, 20,000 people, more people are employed in Williamson County. Our labor force back in June of 2002 was around 64,000. Last June, the latest month that we've got tracking, it's 84,000. I also want you to know the median household income rose from 2002, 2000 to 2008, $17,000. It went from $69,000 in 2000 to $86,000 in 2008. And finally, and probably most impressively, is the market added 3.3 million square feet of occupied space in the last eight years.
Any questions of Matt on what he's reported to us? See none? Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Green, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Nolanville Elementary School is vacant right now, and we are not planning to do any activity on it as far as rehabbing it to a recreation center till 2012. And it's discussing a situation with Commissioner Little beside me, and the fact that Nolanville is trying to establish a town hall within the city. They're working on a project right now that is not really that promising, to put it that way, and wondering if there was a possibility that we could offer the elementary school as a temporary lease site for them to get their feet on the ground and give them some breathing room.
Mr. Chairman, thank you to Commissioner Green and Little. They kind of gave me a heads-up on this, so I had some time to do some research, and I always appreciate that. We have been in contact with Mayor Beth Lawthers out at Nolanville, and they are experiencing some difficulty with getting their city hall located in the old Piggly Wiggly Shopping Center area. And I've assured her that from the day that we took over the old Nolanville Elementary, which we have an agreement with the schools, which you've approved, Doug Hood has moved in quite a bit of the equipment. We can offer some classes in the afternoon to the citizens out there. Likewise, many of you know that we have closed down the old gym, or the library area, the way you wanna call it, refer to it, in Nolanville, and we've shifted those activities over to the Nolanville area. All the while, as many of you know, back in the fall, you approved a way for the new Nolanville Historical Group, headed up by the Mosleys and several other people out there, to try to renovate and find a place for the historical, that historical building, and they've got two years in which to do that. In having the conversation with Mayor Beth Lawthers, she indicated that that would be acceptable to her. So you two gentlemen can go back. I'm in agreement with that on a temporary basis. For the time being, in the early days, we had outlined that for them to be there, and they have since gone a different direction, but because that deal is not materializing in the way that they want to, that's certainly available. I've talked to Doug about it, and we're willing to do that. I think they've got some kind of restrictions to the summertime, but because we're not spending any money right now doing renovation, it'd be a good place for them, and we'll make the rent very reasonable for them to be able to use that, and if they so desire to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Commissioner Green. Any other questions, comments of the mayor? See none? I'd like to recognize our Sergeant-at-Arms, Lynn Sutton, who's here with us tonight. Lynn, it's always a pleasure to have you. Lynn had a great experience today. He requalified on the range today, so congratulations. Sheriff Jeff Long, always a pleasure to have you with us here as well. So thank you, sir. Williams County Schools Director, Dr. Mike Looney, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. I hope he doesn't need that arms training while I'm up here.
I wanted to introduce him before you got up here.
I would like to report to the Commission that the operations in the school district is going very well. We've managed to get through the last several days without snow, and that's always a good thing. As the Commission knows, we're working on a financial plan for next year that will be presented to you in the very near future. We do have four resolutions for your consideration tonight. Be glad to answer any questions at the appropriate time.
Any questions of Dr. Looney at this point? See none? Thank you, sir. Any other committee wishing to report to the Commission before we move through the other portion of the agenda tonight? Any further report? I see none. Moving on to elections and appointments, County Mayor. We have a recommendation of the Emergency Communications District Board of Directors. Four-year terms expiring, March of 2014, at large representatives. The term expiring is Alan Lovett. Nomination, Alan Lovett. Mike Thompson, nomination, Mike Thompson. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Commissioner, who made the motion? Commissioner Smith, the second. Commissioner Chalfont to approve this recommendation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Williamson County Regional Planning Commission, four-year terms expiring, March of 14. Robin Baldry, term expiring, nomination is Robin Baldry. Susan Fisher expiring. Susan Fisher nominated. Commissioner Hayes, a motion. Commissioner Brockman, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Thank you very much. And then on the County Commission appointment to the Highway Commission, two-year terms expiring, March of 12. Southwest District, Mr. Renis Baker. Nomination, Mr. Renis Baker. Southeast District, terms expiring, Charlie Bennett. Nomination, Charlie Bennett. Commissioner Lynch, the motion. Commissioner Hancock- Commissioner Hancock, the second. All in favor of accepting these nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous as well. Thank you very much. Industrial Development Board, six-year terms expiring March of 2016. Barbara Winger, replacement, Vicki Manning. Matt Kelton, replacement, nomination, Matt Kelton. And then finally, Gail Moyer-Harris, nomination, Gail Moyer-Harris. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Cook, Commissioner Wilson, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show that unanimous. Zoning Appeals Board, term expiring, five-year term expiring March of 2015. Term expiring, David Ossbrooks, nomination, David Ossbrooks. Commissioner Langston, Commissioner Williams, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show that unanimous approval. Notaries, you each have received the notaries in the mail from Ms. Anderson, those have been sent to you, and we'll entertain a motion to accept the notaries at this point. Motion by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Cook, to accept the notaries. Commissioner Mills, please.
I don't know whether this is a typographical error, but I was reading the notaries, and you got Miller, Lee A., Miller Lee A.'s. Is that senior, junior, both of them on there? What is that?
Down under New, in the left-hand column, there are two Lee A. Millers. Are there two Lee A.? Or is it just a typo? Jeff, it's down about ten, twelve people in the first column of New.
There should be two of them, because I can count back to make sure that that's the same number of applications I have. So it should be two different individuals.
Two Lee A. Millers, okay. Must be two, Ms. Mills.
All right.
But Jeff will check it.
I'll check.
Check it to make sure, but...
Okay.
That's a school teacher. You found it.
Got my pen out, too.
That's right. Get your pen out. Thank you very much. All in favor of adoption of the notaries as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show that unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to, there's no unfinished business, new business, no zoning appropriations. Let me ask you, at this time, Commissioners Jones and Greer have a delegation here from Fairview, on the Fairview City Fire Department, the Fire Hall. Rather than make them sit through our meeting, do you have any objection to us moving this up to this point on the agenda? Any objection at all? Let's move that up. Resolution 31022, resolution amending the 2009-10 fire protection contributions budget by $120,000 to provide donation to the Fairview Fire Department. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general fund balance. Number 12, I'm sorry, 31012. Commissioners Greer and Jones, I know that Mr. Jones and both Commissioners Greer have been working on this, so I'll let you move its adoption.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Resolution 31012. We'll vote on that, and at this time, I'll allow, let's get the committee reports. The committee reports on 312. Budget Committee.
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you, sir.
It went before the law enforcement.
Law Enforcement Committee.
Law Enforcement Committee, seven in favor, zero against.
Thank you, sir.
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. So five, and five, and five. Commissioner Jones and Greer, I'll allow you to introduce this, please.
Since the city of Fairview and the county work together out in our area to give protection, we wanted to help the city. They're building a beautiful building on Bowie Park Road, which is located to the entrance of Bowie Nature Park. I know in one of the committees, somebody asked exactly where it is, and we ask that you support this. We have the Fire Chief, Mike Cooper, here with us tonight, and City Manager, Andrew Hyatt, if there's any questions that need to be asked. But we do ask for your support on this resolution.
Commissioner Greer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would appreciate your vote on this. As Mr. Jones said, they do provide service to the county as well as the city, and we appreciate their service, and we'd like to support them. Thank you.
Fire Chief, Mike Cooper. Andrew Hyatt, City Manager, and David Mayberry, Finance Director, would you guys stand so we can recognize? Does anybody have any questions on Resolution 31012? Any questions at all? Commissioner Brockman, please.
Mr. Chairman. I was not on those committees. Specifically, what is the 120,000 earmark for? In other words...
You gentlemen, come on up, and we'll let you...
Just so I'll know.
Absolutely.
I brought pictures.
Hand that to Commissioner Brockman.
Thank you.
Most of us saw that in the Budget Committee and other committees, but the chief brought pictures. It's a great addition. Chief, tell us what you're doing over there.
Sure. The project is 1.2 million total, and we ask for a 10% contribution to use on the non-contract items. This is going to be the furnishings, office equipment, dishes, because they live there, the beds, things like the radio tower and things like that, that we did not want to put in the construction contract, because we're relocating our existing tower rather than buying new, so we had to have some separate stuff, and that's what we're going to use this money for.
Any other questions? And if I could, from the chair, just to give you this information, our emergency medical services ambulance area will be physically located in that building, and quite frankly, the Fairview Fire Department, and you guys furnishing this service, it's something that if we didn't have you, we'd have to be doing it ourselves. So you do a great service for the county, and we want to thank you for that. Any other question of any Commissioner from these gentlemen? Commissioner Brockman, has that covered you, okay?
It does, thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor, you had any comments on this? I know you recommend approval, as well as Commissioner Jones. All in favor, it's loaded on the machine. If you're in favor, 31012, press your yes button. Opposed, you no button? Anybody recorded to vote, wish to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Resolution is unanimously adopted. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip back to Fairview.
Thank you.
Resolution number 3101, resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 solid waste sanitation budget by $20,000. Revenues to come from unappropriated solid waste sanitation fund balance, and authorizing the county mayor to expend funds for repairs to the Material Recovery Center. Commissioner Hayes, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Who was the second? Had several. Commissioner Lynch, the second. Committee reports.
Five in favor, zero against.
Solid Waste Board, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget, Commissioner Little.
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes.
I'd like to offer amendment, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to offer amendment for an additional $10,000 to be added to this $20,000. We have found other things that need to be repaired and that need to be done at the same time the remodeling and reconstruction is done, and we need to do it all at once, and that was not available information at our Solid Waste Board meeting, but we were told that there was a likelihood, so I'd like to add $10,000.
Thank you very much. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Commissioner Jones, the second, to the amendment, increasing it by $10,000 to $30,000, so that's an appropriate amendment. Any other discussion on the amendment? If you're in favor of the amendment, press your yes button. Opposed, you no button? Does anybody vote, who wishes to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, zero or no, on the amendment to $30,000. We're back to the resolution as amended. 310-1 is amended. Any further discussion on as amended? Commissioner Smith, you're recognized, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hayes, any further information that you have at this particular point about the cause of the damage, and whether we may have any recourse against previous tenant to recover any of those funds?
Thank you. This latest finding was evident when some bailing and other things, balers were moved out, and we do have to do some other repairs. We believe that this $30,000 will take care of it. We have not completely come to the resolution of how much of that we think will be possible to recover, if any, but we're having the attorneys, as well as the insurance companies and the mayor's office, look into it, and it's still a question out there, but it needs to be fixed, and we don't need to delay. But Louis is here, if you'd like any further explanation, but it is being looked into, but no total at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything further? Anyone? Any question on Resolution 101? I see none. If you're in favor of this resolution, press your yes button. Opposed, you no button? Anybody voted, who wished to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 3102, resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 Parks and Recreation Budget by $1,000. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Walton.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Langston, the second. Parks and Recreation Committee.
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee, Commissioner Little.
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Walton, please.
Yeah, this is where they had a craft show and car show, and this is the donation, there was donations from Miles Auto Spa, and we're just accepting that money for those expenses.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Walton? I see none. If you're in favor of 3102, press your yes button. Opposed, you no button? Everybody voted, who wished to vote? Record a vote. Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number 3103, resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 Parks and Rec Budget by $75,999. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Walton, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made in second, but Commissioner Barnwell, report from the Parks and Rec Committee.
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee, Commissioner Little.
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Walton, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is also where different organizations hire referees and things, and supervisors, this is donations that they're using to pay for those.
And Mr. ... Commissioner Walton, any other amendment that needs to be made to that, please?
There is an amendment, and they want to change the amount from $75,999 to $71,319.
Okay?
In both expenditures and revenue.
So your amendment is to offer the $71,319. You have the amendment that's attached. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Commissioner Brockman, the second. Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? I see none. If you're in favor of the amendment, press your yes button. Opposed, you no button? Anybody voted, who wished to vote? Commissioner Walton?
Hold on.
Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, zero or no, on the amendment, so we're voting on 3103 as amended. Any discussion on 3103 as amended? I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, you no button? Everybody voted, who wishes to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, zero or no. Thank you. Unanimously adopted. About a commission amending it to $71,319. 3104, resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 solid waste budget by $336,000. Revenues to come from unappropriated solid waste sanitation fund balance. Commissioner Hayes, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Jones, the second. Municipal Solid Waste Board.
Four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee, Commissioner Little.
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes, please.
All the, many of the vehicles and a lot of the equipment is, of course, continuing to age with a lot of usage, and they're in need of a great deal of repair and maintenance, and the cost keeps increasing, even though a lot is done in-house. So in order to provide the funding for that improvement in the equipment maintenance, and we need to increase the, this expenditure, but if you will notice in your resolution, the additional funding needing will be offset with the increased expenditures from the additional tipping fee and the sale of the recycled materials received, so it will be offset. But we've just got to keep running, because that's one thing, trash keeps on happening. And Louis is here, if you have any questions.
You pointed out appropriately, Commissioner, that of that $336,000 expenditure, the fees and other things that you've sold, you've raised all that but $77,000. Good job, Louis. Got any comment?
Mr. Chairman, we had a 9% increase in business during this period. Also a 9% increase in business.
Very good. Any questions, Commissioner Hayes, on 3104? I see none. If you're in favor of 3104, press your yes button. Opposed, you no button? Everybody voted, who wished to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. Unanimous adoption, 23, yes, zero, no. Resolution 3105, resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 solid waste sanitation budget by $4,090 for expenses related to the Living Green Expo revenue, to come from rentals and sponsorship fees. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Lynch, the second. Municipal Solid Waste Board.
Four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Commissioner Little, Budget Committee.
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, please, Commissioner.
Yes, you remember, we had the Living Green Expo last fall. This is money that will be coming in from sponsorship fees and rentals, and we, of course, want to do it again this year, so this is coming from local revenues and going to the expenditure of the Living Green Expos.
Any questions of Commissioner Hayes? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 3105, press your yes button. Oppose, you no button? Everybody's voted. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution 3106, resolution transferring $175,000 general-purpose school funds to the School Federal Projects Fund for the purpose of providing money for sufficient cash balance in the School Federal Projects Fund. Commissioner Smith, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Mills, the second. School Board report, 12, yes, zero, no. Education Committee.
Seven, yes, zero, no.
Thank you, sir. Budget Committee.
Five in favor, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Smith, please.
The school system operates a School Federal Projects Fund for the necessary evil of receiving federal funds for the school system, and the nature of those projects and those grants require that we spend money before we get any money back, and the government is becoming slower and slower about reimbursing those funds. And accounting principals frown on having a cash deficit in any of those funds, and so what we're doing is moving some general-purpose school funds as a cushion into that Federal Projects Fund to maintain a balance until the federal funds eventually come through.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lynch, you have a question, sir?
Where is the money coming from in the school budget?
Doc, come on up to the mic, please, Doc.
From unappropriated fund balance.
Okay. Any other questions on Resolution 3106?
Follow-up, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just for Commissioner Lynch, those funds will stay in there as they're needed while that account is open, but they're there as a cushion on a temporary basis and will not be there on a permanent basis.
Any other questions of Commissioner Smith? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 310-6, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody's voted. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. We unanimously adopt 310-6. 310-7. We have resolution requesting an amendment to the 2009-10 General Purpose School Fund for the purchase of general education buses in the amount of $1,42,895. Commissioner Smith, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson II. School Board report, 12, yes, zero, no. Education?
Seven, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Smith, please.
We need seven replacement general education buses and five additional growth buses due to the new schools that are being opened for the upcoming year. There are funds remaining in a previous bond issue for purchase of buses. There's, there are funds from gasoline savings for this year's budget and also some funds in a BEP reserve account that can be used. So there's, there's no additional bonding that needs to be done to acquire these buses. And I would ask for your approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Commissioner Smith? I see none. 310-7 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose your no. Everybody's voted, except Commissioner. There we go. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution is adopted unanimously. 310-8. Resolution appropriating $311,220 from the Williams County Board of Education CTE Child Care Program for operational expenses from fees generated from the program. Commissioner Smith, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell II. School Board report, 12, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Seven, yes, zero, no.
Thank you. Budget?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Smith?
This is a program for childcare for teachers in the school system as well as students in the school system that require it. Basically, this resolution is asking us to move the accounting for that program from the individual schools, the three schools that operate those centers, to the central office finance operation. It's, there's, there's no other material changes with the, with the program. It's just moving the accounting from out in the school, in the schools themselves back into the central office.
Questions of Commissioner Smith? I see none. Commissioner Jones, please.
About how many children take advantage of this service? Or how many children are in this service?
I don't have those exact numbers. I'd have to refer to them.
Dr. Looney, do you know how many children are in, utilizing these services?
I can't give you an exact number, but I believe it's 20 students per class. 20 children per class.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? If you're in favor of this resolution, press your yes button. Oppose your no button.
Yes.
Everybody's voted. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. Unanimous adoption of this resolution, 310-9.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
A quick point.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Langston reminded me of that. I should have mentioned that. This program is self-sustaining through the fees charged. So it's paying its way.
Good point. If you would, put that in the record. Mr. Jeff, to make sure that we've got that documented, please. 310-9. Resolution appropriating $54,057.95 in settlement of a due process case. Funding to come from unappropriated fund balance. Commissioner Smith, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Lynch, second. This is the one that was passed out to you. Was not in the packet. Was handed to you this evening. So it's there. School Board report, 12, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Seven, yes, zero, no.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Smith?
As you can see, this is a, the settlement or a resolution of a due process case. None of us have seen any details on that due to it being a legal settlement. Funding to come from unappropriated fund balance.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Williams, please.
Settlement?
Dr. Looney?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Any other questions? See none. If you're in favor of adopting 310-9, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted. Mr. Wilson? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Unanimous adoption. 310-12. Resolution amending the 2009, oop, already done that one. 310-13. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 Juvenile Services Budget by $15,000. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Receive from participants fees. Commissioner Wilson, please.
Actually, um, Shalfont, or, Mr. Shalfont, do you want to do this one? I signed it for you, but I'll be happy to do it if you want me to. This one we just voted.
Move for approval?
Second.
All right, there you go.
Very good. Move for approval. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee?
Law Enforcement Public Safety, seven. In favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Commissioner Shalfont, explanation, please.
This actually will be no new funds because the fees are covered by the participants in the program.
Any questions of Commissioner Shalfont on 310-13? I see none. If you're in favor of 310-13, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody's voted, except Commissioner Cook. Thank you. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. Unanimous adoption of that resolution. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution 310-14. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 Rural Debt Service Budget by $656,202.92 regarding the transfer and application of certain funds to pay debt service on the county's County District School Bond Series 2009-B. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Mills II. Budget Committee report?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Little, please.
Point your attention, this resolution, number 14, and its companion is number 15 right after it. Number 14 is the rural. Number 15 is the general. If you remember, several months ago, the mayor brought before us the opportunity for the Build America Bonds, which we voted to, in order to do those. These resolutions are an accounting measure for us to get the payments in this, into our accounting department. If you remember that we have to pay at our higher interest rate on these bonds because they are not, non-tax, they are taxable, I'm sorry, fall under the taxable category. However, we get a 35% tax rebate from the federal government for this. And I talked with Mr. Coleman this afternoon. He says, we'd be happy to report to you that we got our first check Friday.
Good.
That so far, the system is working. So this is, this is accounting measure to get this essentially on our books.
Thank you, Commissioner Little. Any questions of Commissioner Little? If you're in favor of 310-14, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody's voted. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution is adopted. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution number 310-15. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 General Debt Service Fund by $409,297.75 regarding the transfer and application of certain funds to pay debt service on the county's General Obligation Bond Series 2009-B. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson II. Budget Committee report?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
Ditto.
Ditto. This is for high schools, similar to 14. Any questions of Commissioner Little on the ditto? Any questions? I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody's voted. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Unanimous adoption of 310-15. 310-16. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 Veteran Services Budget by $2,000. Revenues to come from memorial brick paver sales. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes, second. Budget Committee report?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please, sir.
Memorial Day's coming up. To get this on, put pavers on the books.
Any questions? Commissioner Little on 16. I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, and zero, no. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Resolution 310-17. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 Parks and Rec Budget by $200. Revenues to come from reserve fund. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Who was the second? Walton? Commissioner Walton. Parks and Rec Committee?
Five-four, zero against. I'm sorry.
Budget Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Little?
We see this on an annual basis. This is two scholarships given in Hillsboro from donations.
Thank you. Questions of Commissioner Little on 310-17? I see none. If you're in favor of 310-17, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted who wish to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson. Ms. Cook is out.
She's out. Thank you. Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no. Unanimous adoption with Commissioner Cook out. Resolution 310-19. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 Animal Control Budget by $18,989.82. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Little, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second committee, second by Commissioner Hayes. Public Health Committee?
Four-four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Little, please.
The animal control is great at getting donations. This is accepting them.
Any questions? See none. If you're in favor, press your yes button.
Just a second, please.
Press your yes button if you're in favor. No button if you're not. Let's wait about 15 seconds and Commissioner Cook can push her button. Thank you. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution adopted. Resolution number 310-20. Resolution authorizing the issuance in one or more emissions of general obligation refunding bonds of Williams County, Tennessee, for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of certain outstanding general obligation bonds, making provision for the issuance, sale and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal or premium, if any, and interest on the bonds and repealing any prior resolutions related thereto. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Commissioner Barnwell II. Committee reports. Budget Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Explanation, please.
These are late filed resolutions, 20, 21, 22, 20 is the general obligation portion. 21 is the rural. 22 is the hospital bonds. In 2007, we passed a similar resolution. And when we bring these resolutions to you, they're generally good news that we refunded bonds in order to make a little money off of what's going on in the market. This is no exception. Sam Cruz, Jeff Oldham, both have come up with this. So this is a repeat of the 2007. In 2007, the market did not really move to make it good for us to do this. So this is a rework of those same resolutions that we did in 2007. The general obligation bond, we hope to save about a million dollars. Rural obligation, about half a million. And the hospital bond, about 250, 300,000. Hope to save on those.
And just as an added item, Commissioner Little, this does not extend the life of the bond.
That's correct. And, and, thank you, Mr. Chairman. One other item is we will, we will be doing something a little bit different this time and that we will be accepting the savings all upfront rather than spreading it over the life of the bond.
Any questions of Commissioner Little? It's a great opportunity to save money for the county and keep that property tax rate low. Any questions? I see none. 310-20. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. We adopt unanimously. Late file resolution, number 310-21. A resolution authorizing the issuance in one or, one or more emissions of county district school refunding bonds of Williams County, Tennessee, for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of certain outstanding county district school bonds, making provision for the issuance, sale and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the payment, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal or of premium, if any, and interest on the bonds and repealing any prior resolutions related thereto. Commissioner Little, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell II. Budget Committee report?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation?
I'll say again if you'd like me to.
This is for the rural school bonds. Ditto to the previous. Any questions? Commissioner Little on Resolution 21? I see none. If you're in favor and ready to vote, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. If you would, record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution is unanimously adopted based on that action. Resolution number 310-22. A resolution authorizing the issuance in one or more emissions of hospital revenue and tax refunding bonds of Williamson County, Tennessee, for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of certain outstanding hospital revenue and tax bonds, making provision for the issuance, sale and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal, a premium, if any, and interest on the bonds. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell II. Again, Commissioner Little, explanation. This is for hospital revenue bonds. Same explanation as the two previous resolutions. Any questions of Commissioner Little on 310-22?
Mr. Chairman, I might say that Commissioner Langston asked me a question about how they work these things. And, and it's a product of the market sales and, and market buying conditions. And we, our mayor and David Coleman worked really closely with Sam Cruz and Jeff Oldham to watch the conditions, to make sure they're right. As I said, this, in 2007, it never materialized. And so we're hoping with what's going on in the market now that it will materialize this time. It's not a guarantee. It's not a guarantee.
Good job. Commissioner Langston, please.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to ask that because we needed the flexibility in the past to study the market, look at the market, and so we will be able to go to the market then when the conditions are best. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Other questions? I see none. If you're in favor of this resolution as presented, press your yes button, oppose your no button. Everybody voted. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes.
Twenty-three yes, zero no. Resolution adopted. Resolution 310-10. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation regarding sewage disposal management Commissioner Davis, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman, the second. Board of Health, recommendation? Nine yes, zero no. Public Health?
Four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is simply to allow the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding regarding new regulations from TDEC. We are going to keep the same regulations that we have in regard to LPP systems, but the agreement will indicate that we are just as stringent as anything overall TDEC has to offer. So the state will be in agreement with us.
Questions of Commissioner Davis on 310-10? I see none. Let's vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, oppose your no button. Everybody's voted except Commissioner Green. There we go. Record a vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes.
Twenty-three yes, zero no. We adopt unanimously. 310-11. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to enter to a lease agreement with the GEAR Foundation. Commissioner Hancock, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hester?
Hester.
Property Committee report?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hancock, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this will allow the mayor to enter into an agreement. I understand they've had one before, and it ran out, and they've got to renew it. And this is a nonprofit organization that provides sales of certain articles to low-income and disabled people and things like this.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Hancock? I see none. If you're in favor of 310-11, press your yes button, oppose your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes.
Twenty-three yes, zero no. Resolution is adopted unanimously. 310-18. Resolution authorizing the allocation of $1,550,000 Recovery Zone Economic Development Bonds to the City of Franklin, Tennessee. Commissioner Little, please.
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Mills, the second. Budget Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was either last month or month before we had this resolution come before us on the economic recovery zone. We passed it for the City of Franklin, a certain amount, and we had Thompson Station, I believe, was wanting to be considered in this. It's offered to Thompson Station, Spring Hill, Fairview, and Franklin. And Franklin was the only one that really wanted to step up to the plate. The others have turned it down. So this resolution, what it is accomplishing is apportioning the remaining allocation to the City of Franklin that was not taken in the previous resolution that we passed before.
Commissioner Hayes, please.
I received a letter from Spring Hill Mayor Dinwiddie, and he wanted me to express to you his appreciation for us allowing them the time to research and check to see if they could or did have the time to file for this. Upon review, they discovered that perhaps it was a little more rushed than they were prepared to get everything done. So in their work session, the board did decide that they would forego this one and were very anxious to do so properly to allow the City of Franklin enough time. And I might say as a post note, it is really reassuring to see the cities and the counties working together. I see beginning of cooperation throughout this whole county and all the municipalities, and I think this is one perfect example, and I appreciate that. And thank y'all for giving us time to look at that.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Langston, please.
Yes, I want to reiterate this. We simply are a conduit for this fund. Is that correct? And so when issuing the bonds, it's simply a conduit from the federal government through us to the city.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And as Commissioner, if I could add from the chair, as Commissioner Hayes indicated, we accepted requests from Spring Hill, Fairview, Thompson Station. City of Franklin stepped up first, and we gave the opportunity there. So this will allow the entire $5.729 million to go to the City of Franklin, and we congratulate the city mayor and Mr. Stuckey for getting this together. So any other questions on 310-18? I'm sure the money will be used to create benefit in the City of Franklin. If you're in favor of this resolution, press your yes button, oppose your no button. Everybody's voted. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes.
Twenty-three yes, zero no. Finally, by Resolution 310-23. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute a lease agreement with the Transportation Management Association Group for the old highway facility. Commissioner Smith, please.
Move for approval.
Second. Mr. Barnwell, the second. Budget Committee? Did you meet on that, Commissioner Little? So no report there. Commissioner Smith, tell us about 310-23, please.
This is simply allowing the county mayor to negotiate and enter into and execute a lease agreement with TMA Association, TMA Group for the highway department facility. They're off Columbia Avenue, and you're familiar with TMA Group and the transportation services they offer. So I'm with the trolleys and various other vehicles, and I'm sure this facility would be a good fit for them.
Any questions? I see none. In favor of this resolution, press your yes button, oppose your no button. Everybody's voted. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes.
Twenty-three yes, zero no. Resolution is accepted and adopted unanimously by the Board of County Commissioners. Any announcements before we close our session tonight? Commissioner Williams, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.